If you're interested in that, I know Harold and Ms. Walker going and Doug and Ms. White.
I've got a meeting.
Okay. Looks like it's gonna be.
It says you're closed on the calendar here.
Yeah, we're closed, man.
This is kind of what we're closing.
I used to have it in the office over here, I could ask myself my question.
We're closed.
I probably would, I might still.
Have fun.
Do you have a luncheon coming on?
Do you think it was kinda quiet? No phone calls?
That's the same, that's the same day as the rise.
A lot of work done, isn't it?
Yeah.
That's a different.
I got a message from them, they said, "I think this is a conflict for you," and I was like,[51.55][51.55]"I'll figure it out." You know. I never, I never understand why they don't figure that out, so. Okay. Well, I got seven o'clock, and for some of us, there's a very important football game coming on here shortly.
Lund.
Here.
Johnston.
Here.
Watts.
Here.
Allen. Jacobs.
Here. Approval of the minutes?
Move to approve.
Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes. Adoption of the agenda?
Move to adopt.
Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes. All right, and our first and second reading for ordinances is an ordinance accepting permanent easement dedication from Brady Commerce Park LLC in Warrensburg, Missouri.
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, staff's been working with the Brady Commerce Park project along with the Dollar Creek project. Within that project, there's easements required for utilities. This easement is long and beside the sewer easement we put in that location for that. And this easement's been approved by the owner. So staff has, the city cap approved it, provided the easement.
All right. Would you approve that one?
Move to pass that ordinance to second reading by title.
Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
This is an ordinance approving and accepting a final plat. Wait. I have the wrong thing here, I went too far over.
Orders accepting permanent easement dedication from Brady Commerce Park.
I'm looking through, I don't have any here.
Orders accepting permanent easement.
I'm gonna get my name out, I'm sorry. This is an ordinance accepting permanent easement dedication from Brady Commerce Park LLC in Warrensburg, Missouri. This is for adoption or rejection.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes. Next one is an ordinance authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute a Missouri highway, to execute a Missouri highways and transportation commission break and limited access license agreement in the form attached heretofore for the Brady Commerce Park Veterans Road Extension Project Phase Two in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri.
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, staff's been working with MoDOT and the owner of Brady and Commerce Park to develop a break-in access agreement for access to the Dollar Tree and commercial development. This is for the Phase Two portion of the project. MoDOT has evaluated the cost on the break-in access and determined it should be an amount of eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. The cost of which should be shared between the owner and the city. Staff would request approval of the break-in gra- access agreement.
Looks like they came out a little lower than the number they told us before.
We've already, the Brady LLC has already done their, their cost share. Right. Move said bill be passed second reading by title.
Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
This is an ordinance authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute a Missouri highways and transportation commission break-in limited access license agreement in the form attached heretofore for the Brady Commerce Park Veterans Road Extension Project Phase Two in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri. This is for adoption or rejection. Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes. We got an ordinance authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute a contract with CAT Excavation Inc. for the Veterans Road Extension Project Phase One in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri.
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, city accepted bids on December fourteenth for the Veterans Road Extension Phase One. There were four qualified bidders for the project. The lowest bidder came in with CAT excavation. They was the lowest and most responsive responsible bidder for the project of fifty-one thousand, or five hundred and fifty-one thousand, twenty-three dollars and six cents. Engineer's estimate on this project was eight-hundred and seven thousand, one hundred and sixty-one dollars, which CAT came in at two-hundred and fifty-six thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars under the engineer's estimate for the project. Stat- CAT is a known contractor to the city, has done several projects. Staff is confident in the work that will be done by this contractor and requests approval of the bid.
Is there any room for any value engineering in any of this yet?
Really, at this point, we've got pulled down pretty tight on the project. Did you have something in your mind?
Well, yeah, I noticed in one of the line item bids is street lighting. Was there any consideration given to solar lighting?
Well, I mean, you know, we've already bid the project and had that in, had our specs already established. Would've been easier if we had established that. It won't hurt for us to go back and take a look at that.
Yeah, we got, what, nineteen thousand, I think, just for the conduit fees, so.
You know, there might be some, some savings there. Staff could certainly look at that, but, you know, as we set up our bid specs, we'd like to follow through on that.
Right, right.
We could've done that ahead of time.
Okay.
We will go back and.
Thank you.
How many bids do we have on it? How many bids do we have on it?
We have four bids.
Four.
Just out of curiosity, assuming we did do solar lights, those would be the property of KCPN, if we were down on that?
No, they'd be our property. We would have, we would own those. I don't know that KCPN was doing any installation specifically on some solar.
I thought KCPN owned all the lights.
And I don't know how that would work with KCPN.
Yeah.
Solar, I'm not familiar with any solar they put in town, or they still own.
My thought would be is we pay just a fee per pole, we don't pay per usage, and so even if we went solar, we would probably still pay the fee per pole and.
Right.
It would have a, it would have a binding impact, but I don't know that it would represent any long-term savings as such in electrical.
If they were our lights, then there would be possibly some savings, but seeing they're not. Yeah, yeah.
I'm not sure that they would.
But we'll take them at it.
With the poles that are put, or that's putting our lights on their.
Right, right. Well, yeah, because the, the line item doesn't even include a pole, so on KCPN's pole and base. Okay, thanks. I'd move said bill be passed second reading by title.
Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
This is an ordinance authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute a contract with CAT Excavation Incorporated for the Veterans Road Extension Project Phase One in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri. This is for adoption or rejection. Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes. Let's see here, we're loving MoDOT tonight, aren't we?
Yeah.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute the Missouri highway and transportation commission cost of.
Portionment.
Portionment, there we go, thank you. Agreement for the citywide traffic signal upgrade project in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri.
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, staff's been working on the signal light upgrade as part of the bond election. With after sixteen city owned lights and four MoDOT owned lights. Staff working with MoDOT has worked to develop a cost share portion for their four lights, which would include the ones over the interchange at fifty and Maguire. The signal at DD and Maguire and DD Ridgeview. With that project, as it engineers estimate costs of six hundred and sixteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars, MoDOT is willing to reimburse the city for half that cost of three-hundred and eight thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars. Staff has requested that the city council approve this agreement and so we can move forward with, with bidding the project.
I would like to say, I'd like to express my gratitude to our staff and our engineer for staying on this. The initial response from MoDOT was is that, you know, it was an eligible project, they weren't going to approve the cost share, and so the diligence of staff and our engineer that's doing the study for the project stayed diligent on it and made the solution, and now we have three-hundred and eight thousand from MoDOT that we wouldn't have otherwise.
Yeah, motion to move forward.
Move to pass said ordinance to second reading by title.
Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
This is an ordinance authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute a Missouri highways and transportation commission cost appro- proportionment agreement for the citywide traffic signal upgrade project in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri. This is for adoption or rejection. Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes. An ordinance approving and accepting a final plat of the Keystone Development Second Plat, a subdivision of the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, located at 305 and 315 Russell Avenue.
Members of city council, this is a, these are the properties, the two new lots on the west side of the lake area there. They do extend into the middle of the lake to, their eastern property lines will match up to the west property lines of the first two lots that were created. With these two lots being approved and recorded with the final plat, that will be all of the land that was in the original preliminary plat that was considered and approved in 2015. That original preliminary plat called for three lots on this side of the lake, and so this, in the final form, is only going to be two lots. They've made all of the requests that staff has, all the requirements staff has requested have been included, except for one that was included in a previous version, didn't make it onto the final version, which was to show the property owners of the adjacent properties, and they, so the ordinance is recommending approval with that shown on the final Mylar. Coincidentally, staff has received the final Mylar and it has been shown on there, so at this point, we would recommend approval of the ordinance estimated of the applicants here, if you have questions for them.
They have no questions. Move said bill be passed second reading by title.
Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
This is an ordinance approving and accepting a final plat of Keystone Development Second Plat, a subdivision in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, located at 305 and 315 Russell Avenue. This is for adoption or rejection. Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes. That's the end of the ordinances, please. We have a request by Greg, is that Housman? I got it right, good. DMV for the city, the city to waive curb requirements for the Warrensburg Animal Hospital located at 316 West Young.
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, Dr. Housman is in the process of making improvements to his property. Also, his improvements kick in. He, per chapter twenty, the farmers will be required to put curb along the street front of his property. Outline, basically, in the letters, the fact that he'd have to put in fifty-foot curb starting at West Young Street at the intersection, and then leave a forty-foot driveway, then put in a thirty-foot driveover curb, followed by another forty-foot driveway and then curb. Mr. Housman, or Dr. Housman has some concerns regarding horse trailers being able to access the property, and although we have the ordinance in place, I do not have the ability to waive that. I felt it was something that needs to come with the council, like, to make a decision. Mr. Housman is here tonight to speak. His little council committee, here's what he has to say. I've given you a couple of pages up there that shows the improvements and the red line, and so showing what curb would have to do for access to his existing property.
Staff's recommendations, Lund?
Yes, the staff recommendation is this, I have to follow on what the ordinance says. We're just asking that the council would be amiable, amiable to giving a waiver on that or not.
Dr. Housman, is that, is that the driveover curb that's directly across, the one that was put in at the?
Outback.
Outback trucks? Would that be acceptable?
No.
Okay.
As, as the horse trailers come in, they have to come in at an angle, and so, you know, they would, I, the trailer and the truck would invariably go over those curbs, and so, you know, if you're seatbelted in a truck, it's kinda like going over a speed bump at an angle. You know, you can handle that, but if you have a horse in the trailer and you go ahead and rock those, it's one thing for a healthy horse, and it's a real problem for an injured horse.
Right.
So it's a safety concern, first and foremost.
So it's the back section where you handle the horses is where your issue is, it's not the front section where your parking lot is?
Well, they, because they can, there has to be several curbs, and people pull in the front section and then exit the back section. No matter what way they enter or exit, they're going to end up going over a curb, even if it's a driveover curb.
So what we're looking at then is a continuous driveway?
To just leave it how it is, continuously open driveway.
But it would be concrete?
Well, his existing asphalt driveway that lives today.
Pardon me?
His driveway's asphalt as it is today.
But the, I guess where the trailers unload is a, is a gravel area?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The board of adjustment had a case last week to consider the, the surface as well as the land use classification of the property, and the result of that decision would be that you'll see no changes to the parking area, any of the parking area. The gravel, the impacted gravel that's there now will be allowed to remain in place as part of the required parking. It will not change the surface.
Okay. I can understand that for what is, you know, what the use of is for. When did Outback do theirs?
Last year.
Last year.
And then improvements in addition to that.
Okay. This would not affect the curbing from Young back to the first drive area, I'm assuming? We, we would still require that curb?
He would, he would, you know, the requirement I have from, coming from Young up to that point, that is required.
Right.
He's asking the entire requirement waived because of the way trucks would approach and try to pull up to the front of his property.
So Chuck's turning the Lakeview, and they're gonna go down towards the back side here, right?
Right.
Okay. The area you're talking about is the front section of Highway fifty, right?
Correct.
Well.
Well, from Young Street, the first section that, that's called out by chapter twenty, from Young, was it thirty feet?
Yeah, it's fifty feet.
Fifty feet, okay.
I think we're just talking about these red sections, right?
Right.
Yeah.
The red section would be curb that would be required under the ordinance.
Right.
So just the middle two red areas would, would affect the safety of the horses, is that correct?
I would prefer not to have any curb in there at all. We have, we have, in the springtime of the year, where we have several trailers coming at once, some of them have to turn in earlier than others, and so I'd prefer just to leave it as it is and not have any curbing at all.
So I'm just, I'm throwing ideas out what I'm doing right now. Is there an option or an ability we have that would be say that if we allow this, that this building is ever sold, that we can then go back and require the curb to be installed? Is that?
You would have to change use, wouldn't it?
You'd be waiting for another improvement to the property. You'd trigger it again.
I mean, if you've been in there, it's really only built to be a vet.
Well, right, I mean, I've been there too.
So you'd either have to have a change in use of the property, or you'd have to have an improvement to the property that would then trigger the requirement to be brought up to code, if that's correct.
Well, I'd be inclined to, to seriously consider the, the no curb to the back of the property, but the curbing from Young, the first fifty feet of curbing since we just did that right across the street, I don't know.
I think, you know, for me, I mean, it's a safety issue, and, and for, for, you know, my horse clients, you know, one of the unique things of my practice is that it's about forty percent equine.
Right.
And ninety percent of that comes into the clinic. In years past, you know, we went to the firms, but that's inefficient, and so they come in, and so I have to make it as, as welcoming and as safe as possible for people to come. People don't, it's inconvenient, and there's, I have a lot of clients, they're not good at driving trucks and trailers.
Right.
And so it has to be as simple and convenient and safe. I mean, safety number one. If they don't perceive it as safe, they're not gonna come.
When, when, when do you propose doing these, these upgrades? What's the timing?
And, and the upgrade is just gonna be a forty by sixty covered area like a large hard horse.
Okay.
And I would hope to do it within the next three or four months.
Okay.
And all it does is, is cover an area where a currently parked and restocked dead truck.
Nothing exists now.
And then, and then cover a sand working area so that you can work on horses and.
Right.
Well, I would be willing to grant the request for the safety items of the horses only, but the, the entrance area, I see no reason why it should not be curbed, especially since we made Outback do it right across the street, so the middle two, I, I do see how those could be a safety hazard to the horses, because those are gonna be driven over. The outside two, at the far ends of the property, I don't see how they would be using, definitely not the, the front, and the front would be the most visible for Outback as well as everybody else driving by there, and so I would not want to, to grant the request for all of it, to do nothing. I would, I would just do the safety aspect for the horse's sake.
Okay, so how much would you want at the very, at the very south end? I mean, because it really needs to, the south end needs to be completely open. You know, the, of the trucks and trailers that we have come through, we have them come through as big as a semi, and semi cannot even go ahead and, and get around on the south side and have great challenges on the north side.
Well, the north side, I've, I always see cars parked there when I drive by every day, so the semis and trucks don't drive through that area, and that's the part that's visible for people driving down Young Street, so the, the back of the property is, is not my concern, it's just the front.
And there, it's not that they're parked in there, it's more that they're using that part to go ahead and, and access my property. I think.
I think that, I think for the sake of setting a standard, there's gonna have to be some type of curb there. Whether that's a ten-foot curb, or a fifteen-foot curb, or a twenty-foot curb, but I think it's important that some type of curbing is put in the front, especially since, you know, it's, it's a burden for the Outback folks as well to have to drive over those, because I, I use that parking lot quite a bit and understand that they're trying to be up to code.
Yeah, I can, I can understand that. I'd like, it'd be nice if it could be half, maybe twenty-five feet rather than.
Listen, I mean, you're, you're talking about.
I'm saying, just put a little bit of curb, just, just the red spot right there.
Right here?
Yeah, and not even quite that far, it'd be a little bit less.
It's just about what Outback has, drove over there and looked at it, and they're curbed.
Do you have this?
Yeah.
Yeah, their curb from Young looks like it's probably thirty feet.
So what, so what?
It didn't, it didn't.
You're, what you're proposing right now is the first red line?
The first red line, but actually would be a little bit shorter than what is seen there. Now, what exactly the distance would be, I would leave that up to, to staff to work out, but just the first, the entrance to the property off of Young, you know, so, so that we don't set a standard that people aren't following, you know, that we're not enforcing codes. So we wanna make sure that we're being fair to all businesses concerned, that this is a, not passing something for cost sake. This is, this is a safety item for the health of the horses, and that's the reason that we're considering this, in my opinion.
Right.
And we still want there to be the look that, that we're looking for, for our city, but also have the safety of the horses. So I'm, I'm recommending on that first red line right there off of Young, that's gonna be shortened, whatever it comes, I don't know what it would come out to.
Twenty-five, I think that'd be great.
Yeah, just whatever, and I'd, I'd let you and staff come to an agreement, bring it back to council, and I think we would all.
Well, if we could go from that point, that corner up to where the corner of his building, north end of his building.
Or where the parking lot starts, or whatever, yeah.
That's at forty-four.
So if we could, if we could back it down to twenty-five feet, that would be great. So almost half of what the, almost half of what that red is in there.
Just, just so that it's, people see it.
With that picture, just to help me out, because I, I mean, I've been to your practice, but I've never, I, I don't drive trucks, so.
At least to the, through the grass area and to the parking lot.
This is what my brain's telling me, is when you're bringing horse trailers in, you're coming in and you're bringing your horses back here.
Yeah, they're usually going back here, and then, and then they circle around and then they come out. And so if this, if this red one at the back, this, as long as it, as long as it's flush with the dumpster, nobody can go past the dumpster, and that's gonna be fine for getting out, but when these guys are starting to go ahead and turn out on, on Young, sometimes they have to, I mean, they have to get themselves positioned to get onto Lakeview, and so if they could, you know, if they could back up, if this could just back up to about, you know, half of this red one, that would give them more space to come in.
So you're saying at the back of the property?
Slim, does chapter twenty require straight back curb?
It can be either layover or, or work the back on it. I'm sure without that, we work, we're gonna put a driveover.
Right. In the, yeah.
I'd do the, do that for this as well.
Well, from what I'm hearing, a lazyback curb, even for the twenty-five feet, may be more advantageous.
And, and we would, we would do that. I mean, that would be fantastic, and, and, you know, Forrest, I mean, he's a, he's a great neighbor and he understands.
Right.
You know, what we're looking at, how it's different.
Sure, yeah.
He'll say he wouldn't be mad if it was a little.
I, I would recommend that Slim work with, with Dr. Housman and, and perhaps Outback on the, on this curb and, and do what they. uh, on the, uh, on this curb and, and, uh, do what the councilman, uh, recommended.
Okay. I mean, I think, I don't, I don't see a problem with getting something that, that your business is still able to operate in.
Right.
I mean, the city's gonna be happy with, where they can, you know, still have our curb and gutter. We, we met the curb and gutter requirements to where we can, so, obviously, we don't wanna- Yeah, so, I, I think just, yeah, I, I say you guys get together, put something together, bring it back to us, and then we can just, we can-
Well, be down for a good-
Yeah, yeah, just, we, 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 we leave it to your discretion.
There you go, I like that.
Do we need to, is anything official on that, or?
There should be a motion.
Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead, it was your idea.
I, I move to, uh, amend, um-
Gran a variance.
I, I, I move to, to grant a variance to the ordinance, uh, at the discretion of staff. No second.
Lund?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Wad?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
Just out of curiosity, why, why would that not, why would this not go, gone to variance instead of?
Because this requirement is in chapter twenty-
Okay.
And the Board of Adjustment only has authority over chapter twenty-seven, the zoning ordinance. This is in the public sidewalks.
Okay.
This one over, uh-
Excellent. Well, thank, I, thank you for bringing that to us, I mean, really.
Thanks for considering.
You bet.
Appearance of the council not listed on the agenda. Do you have anybody back there? Uh-oh, who isn't it? All right, Phil Miller, six oh one Rinway.
Sounds scary to get up there after, on the football game. Might delay this a little bit. Um, but I had a couple, uh, wonderings or questions since, uh, this citizen for environmental action came in September and asked the council to consider, uh, supporting the Paris Climate Agreement. If my memory serves me correct, you were going to try to make a decision by November, but then Dennis Murphy came in December, uh, and I think we had about twenty people in the audience that came to, to hear him that. Uh, so I'm just kind of wondering where the city council is on that decision, and also wondering what process, uh, you're going to use. I'm, I'm kind of, and I'm asking that question partly because I'm assuming this would be an open session that citizens could listen to or take part in. Uh, it doesn't seem like it would be a closed session kind of, uh, decision-making process, so those are my wonderings or questions.
So we need to put that on the agenda as a discussion item, or can it be discussed now, or?
You can't discuss at this meeting, that'll need to be an agenda item.
Okay.
So you'll need a direct staff to put it on the agenda when you would like it. Last, so last time we discussed, council wanted to do some research on their own, that was back in October, or whenever that was, and it, or September. And then, we did bring the gentleman-
Mm-hmm.
-to do that. And so, at this point, staff is waiting direction from council, whether you wanna have further conversation, or whether you wanna go on a future council agenda.
Um, I'm, I propose putting it on the next agenda.
Yeah, next one.
Let's put it on the next agenda, and that way we can have the discussion.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Mislandyous matters from the mayor and city council. I don't have anything, so, what you got, Harold? Can you do?
What's that?
Mislandyous matters from mayor and city council?
No, I don't.
I don't have anything, so.
Uh, we do need, um, we need, we do need some new appointments for the tip commission.
Okay.
We need them, yeah, the office commission to need to be, all get with.
Okay, yeah, get with me.
We need to have a meeting, 'cause it does require a coach to have a meeting anyway.
Okay.
And we haven't had one since we handled the Keystone Tip issue.
Okay. How many, how many more people do we need for that?
I think it was three.
Three, three more? Okay. All right, Matthew, what you got? Director of Finance report.
So, our revenues are up this month, uh, about thirty-three percent, but about a third of that is due to supplemental sales tax, uh, the purchase that we received from the state. Uh, and it was noted that, uh, the supplemental portion, uh, was local sales and use tax, uh, that they collected through November, so that, it didn't give a beginning date or an end date, it just said through November. But it was about a hundred and fourteen, a little over a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. Uh, it did make a big difference from December, but we really cannot tell where that money is coming from. Uh, they said that they would put something on the website to tell us, to tell you, to basically use some backup information from it, but, uh, there, there has been nothing put on, uh, the my tax, Missouri my tax, what it's like, um-
It doesn't come with a Here Comes Santa Claus or anything along that?
No, just, uh, kind of, that's, that's the state's version. But, but it did, uh, it does make our, our December look really good, you know, not necessarily all of the summer money.
Hmm.
So, uh, we're, we're, we're over full budgeted and over where we were this time last year as well, but I can't tell you that our revenues that we're collecting, where two season days were, are down again, so.
Should we have one other issue before we move on? So, looking ahead through the calendar, uh, with the council meetings falling on the second and fourth Monday of every month, we do have two conflicts this year, Memorial Day and Veterans Day. Uh, that those are, uh, holidays that the city halls are closed, but those, we would, according to calendar, we would meet for a regular council meeting. So, I would like some direction from council, what you would like to do for those. Um, given the, I guess, the tradition of council of only having one council meeting in November and one in December, uh, with Veterans Day being that one council meeting in November, I don't know, I recommend that we not have a meeting that month. The Memorial Day one is up to you. Um, so I don't know if you wanna do it on Tuesday, or if you wanna do it on the first or third Monday of that month, instead of the second. Uh, but I'm looking for clarification from council, so we can get it up on the calendar and the public's aware that, uh, that month, we will be having council meeting on a different night.
I would say we just move that one meeting, and like you said, in November, we usually only have one anyways, so.
Yeah, we do.
You have a preference, whether it be a Tuesday or a different Monday night of that month?
Was it, that's March?
Uh, it would be May, May and November.
Okay. Yeah, my Tuesdays are free in May, so Tuesday would be fine for me.
Yeah.
Were you talking about the second, the second week then, or just the day after Memorial Day?
We're only talking the day after.
Memorial Day will be the-
So it'll be the twenty-ninth?
Memorial Day's Monday.
Mm-hmm. Right now, it's open.
Black it off.
So it'll be the second council meeting in May, that'll be the twenty-eighth, is a conflict.
Mm-hmm.
So we could do the twenty-ninth, or you could choose not to have a council meeting that month, although we're typically in the throes of budget, although we have plenty of meetings for budget with council.
Yeah.
So, it's up to you what, um, we'd have to look at timelines as far as projects, looking if it's on track for, for Dollar Tree and that kinda stuff. But, uh, if we don't have it done by then, we're gonna be, we're gonna be hurting, so. Uh, but then in November, it was the, um, the first, or the second Monday, which would be the twelfth, which is Veterans Day.
Was Veterans Day.
So we could either do it on the nineteenth, or we could do it the third day.
Rather move it to the nineteenth, if nobody-
Nineteenth would be the same week as Thanksgiving, so you'd be meeting the Monday right before Thanksgiving.
I can't even plan tomorrow.
That's really taking ahead, isn't it?
I still, I still have to book my seats, so you all, you all decide, so.
Ultimately, it's all changeable.
Block off the calendar, Brian.
I actually bought it off for six years, but. Yeah, November's, um, Tuesdays are not good in November for me, but I can, I can make an adjustment for one Tuesday, it's not a problem.
Mondays are much easier for me, so that I can plan.
Staff can do whatever you-
Yeah, I can still come, we can handle that.
I mean, if it were the Monday after Thanksgiving, I think I'd be more worried, but-
I won't be in town Monday after Thanksgiving. I'm never in town the Monday after Thanksgiving.
I don't know if I'm in town Tuesday after Memorial Day.
Well, I, I know that date's in my calendar block. I'm driving back from Ohio the Monday after Thanksgiving, and that's a guarantee every year, so. I would, I would recommend avoiding the Thanksgiving holiday week, just because people are planning vacations and the students are gone, I mean, that's, that could, that could-
The other option is we could do it November fifth.
I'd be cool with that, that's fine.
Yeah, that'd be fun.
Planning commission meets that day.
Who?
Goes straight from their meeting into this meeting with recommendation.
Who meets that?
Have staff report, they need a five thirty.
Well, we can plan on that tentatively, and then if we get there and we have conflicts that we need, back to back, then we'll have to talk about it. So, so tentatively, right now, we're fighting, uh, Monday, November fifth, for the November meetings, and then, uh, we'll just do the Tuesday right after, uh, Memorial Day in May.
Cindy, can you email that? On my book. Are you able to email those changes?
Yeah, I will, yeah, I will, thanks.
Thank you.
You got anything, Barbara?
We received the paperwork from ODOT that was sent in in December. We also action on it, so we'll have those annexation proceedings in front of you in February.
I'm opening the bids, so we'll go back to phase two on Friday, and prepare what's ready for the next council meeting.
Anticipate same players, basically?
Um, more rush.
The bids are coming a quarter million hundred, just like last time?
Uh, I don't care for you now.
They're already gonna be mobilized, surely they can do it.
Slim, when would we be looking at actually kinda breaking ground for that road?
Talk about phase two or phase one?
Finishing the road, where I can drive on it.
Phase two takes, from phase two takes from the V eight to Cahill, right?
Phase one goes from-
Okay, I got it backwards, okay. She's not gonna drive from phase one, phase two.
As soon as weather permits, contractor will start on phase one.
Phase one.
Uh, from, uh, Enterprise to Cahill, uh, once we add everything together on phase two, contractor will start. We'll be really fast on that, we want, there's a big press with phase two.
Phase two is from the distribution center to thirteen?
From thirteen.
Yeah.
The eight and her foot extension, yeah. And then, the one you wore tonight for phase one does require the contractor to be completed no later than September first, correct? So it would be no later than September first. It could be done earlier than that.
Aren't they opening prior to that?
We're talking, I, I switched on you, I'm back to talking to phase one.
I'm sorry, got it.
Yeah, on the west side of Cahill, connecting in, that will be required to be done by September first.
Okay.
Could be done sooner, but no later than September first.
That's the one you can drive on.
Yeah. And then when we have the bids back-
I expect I'll go one way more than the other.
We opened the bids this week, when we bring up council, what are better ideas, but-
The twelfth, they're gonna open it?
Yeah.
Good.
So phase, so phase one takes you from, phase one takes you from the VA home to-
Cahill.
Cahill.
It's called phase, phase one, 'cause that was the one that was originally designed and planned first.
Right.
Uh, the piece for Dollar Tree wasn't planned until Dollar Tree came in the picture and we needed it, so that got labeled phase two, 'cause phase one was already on the books.
Just wanted to be sure I had my faces right. All right. Nothing in the back there?
No, sir.
Marcy?
Anything additional?
Yeah?
Me neither.
All right.
Keep it going.
There you go.
I'm gonna keep you through the game, sir.
There you go. Anything for the legal side?
Happy to be here.
All right. You got anything, Bob?
No, I don't, thank you.
You got anything, Cindy?
Nope.
All right, I'm done, too. You'll need somebody to move to go to close session.
Vote to close part of this meeting pursuant, am I doing that part right now?
Yes.
That what you mean? I'm sorry. Okay. I thought maybe I jumped the gun there.
I know.
Vote to close part of this meeting pursuant to section six one zero point zero two one of the revised statutes of Missouri relating to, one, legal actions, causes of action or litigation involving the city and its confidential or privileged communication between the city and its representatives and its attorneys; two, leasing, purchase or sale of real estate where public knowledge might adversely affect the amount paid in the transaction; three, hiring, firing, disciplining or promoting of particular employees by a public governmental body when personal information about the employee is discussed or recorded; twelve, documents or any documents related to a negotiated contract until a contract is executed or all proposals are rejected; thirteen, individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings, or records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment.